You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the June 11th, 2019 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. I am Shay Woodbury, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing as Board Member Lyda Calvert-Hayes give us our invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Peace be with our children as this school year ends. Grant our students a safe and productive environment. We thank our teachers and staff for all your service to our school. May everyone have peace over the summer and be safe. Amen.
Thank you.
Before we begin with our order of business item, I would like to recognize all of our 2019 Winston-Salem Forsyth County School graduates. We had approximately 4,000 students to graduate from our high schools and I know that I feel as a board member that is a hallmark of why I do what I do to make sure that our students successfully exit out of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools ready for whatever the world, you know, has to offer them. I would like to congratulate Leah Crowley Wheelson for graduating from Reynolds High School and my nephew graduated from Mount Tabor, Jaquan Albright. So, we just, you know, very excited in this moment of time as board members to be able to share personally our successes and also as a board, the success of all 4,000 of our children. So, I wanted to make sure that we recognize that before we go to our first item, which is our agenda. I need to get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or question? All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. The next item is our special recognitions and first John Sullivan will present our North Carolina High School Double A Spring State Champions.
Chair Woodbury, Dr. Simington, members of the board, thank you for having us here this evening to recognize these athletes and their accomplishments. We're thrilled to honor our 2019 North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Champions for the spring sports season. I'd like to thank the coaches, especially the coaches, for their commitment to these young athletes to get them through these long days and to accomplish their goals and these achievements. As I read the athletes' names, if the parents and the family are present, please stand and be recognized with your sons or daughters as well. We will start with the 4A Track and Field from West Forsyth High School, Women's Pole Vault Lindsey Absher with a jump of 12 feet. Lindsey was unable to be present this evening. We will bring out Reagan High School who have two state champions relay races. Come on out, gentlemen. These five young men were champions in the 4x100 meter relay. Dylan James, Keyshawn Dirks, Tajay Woods, and Daniel Moyer Jr. with a new 4A state record time of 41.16. In the 4x200 relay, Keyshawn Dirks, Tajay Woods, Xavion Hamilton, and Daniel Moyer set a new 4A state record of 125.5. They are coached by Eric Fritz. Congratulations, gentlemen. Now, we will bring out our 3A state champ from Mount Tabor High School, Patrick Freeman. Patrick is a pole vaulter and he had a jump of 15 feet. That's just unbelievable. Coached by Patrick Cromwell, Mike Riley, and Chris Page. Congratulations, Patrick. Next, we will bring out the Parkland High School 3A Women's Track and Field State Team Champions and we will recognize them individually and they are coached by Antoine Hughes, head coach. To accomplish the team state champion, they had individual champions. In the long jump, Aja Mumford with a jump of 18 feet 3 inches and she is a freshman. And she was also awarded the 3A Sportsmanship Award for the 2019 meet. The 100 meters, Alexis Patterson with a time of 11.95. She also won the 100 meter hurdles with a time of 13.91, which was a 3A state record, and she was voted the most valuable performer at the meet. They had a 4x100 meter relay championship consisting of Aja Mumford, Jade Stevenson-Damon, Delneek Penn, and Diamond Lyerly with a time of 47.1. They had a 4x200 meter relay champion, Aja Mumford, Alexis Patterson, Delneek Penn, and Diamond Lyerly. Also setting a new state record with a time of 138.3. Now, I would like to bring up coaches to say a few words about the team championship.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We took 12 young ladies to the 3A state championship. Out of that 12, eight of those young ladies were seniors, so that's why we're here with two young ladies tonight. Most of those, well, pretty much all of those eight young ladies, that senior beach week. But we have our core of our team next year, Aja Mumford and Jade Stevenson-Damon. They will be the centerpiece to our team, so they'll be the ones that'll try to help us defend our national, well, not national, but defend our state championship title going into next year. But real quick, I just want to say something about those eight seniors. Seven of the eight girls are gonna run track on the next level next year. We have one that's gonna walk on and run for Winston State. We have two young ladies that's gonna go to Bryan and Stratton College in Virginia Beach. We have one that's going to North Carolina Central, Delneek Penn, her parents over there. And we have one that's going to North Carolina State University, Alexis Patterson. And those young ladies, they put in a lot of hard work and they deserve this opportunity and everything that came behind it. So, again, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, that's awesome. Next, we have Matt Dixon and he will present the 2019 Core Awards recipients and also the 2018-19 Promise Awards recipients.
Chair Woodbury, Dr. Simington, board members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize some of our district's best of the best. Last year, you may recall, we took all of our of the year awards and created them into one night and called it the Core Awards based off after our core values. This year was no different. We held our second annual Core Awards where we announced the winners of our Classified Employee of the Year, our Assistant Principal of the Year, our Principal of the Year, and our Teacher of the Year. And those recipients this year, our Classified Employee of the Year from East Forsyth High School was Sandra Shropshire. Our Assistant Principal of the Year from Lewisville Elementary was Samantha Fitzgerald. Our Principal of the Year from Mineral Springs Elementary and Middle Schools, Dr. Deborah Gladstone. And our Teacher of the Year from Spies Global Elementary, Abby Woodson.
I would ask if there are any folk here in the audience that's here to support these employees to stand up, whether it's schools or family, to show our support. Thank you so much.
The next award winners I would like to recognize is one that's done in partnership with our district and the Forsyth Educator Partnership. I'd like to ask Donald Dunn, the President of the FEP, to come join me. We have a strong standing partnership with the Forsyth Education Partnership and they help us honor our new teachers. And the award they give is appropriately named the Promise Award. So, this year, we had over 200 new teachers to our district, some fresh out of college, some coming to teaching after pursuing other paths that joined us this summer. 22 of those brand-new teachers were nominated for their outstanding teaching for the Forsyth Educator Partnership Award, for the Promise Award. And so, at that celebration, Donald Dunn presented them their award. And in addition to the award, the Forsyth Education Partnership also gives each of the winners $1,000. So, you can see how deep this partnership goes. And I'd like to ask Mr. Dunn to say a few words about that award.
Thank you. We're so excited to be part and participate with our relationship with the school system. And this is just the way that we, one of the many ways that we do. The big way that we have is the educated warehouse, which is at Diggs Latham. And that's an opportunity for the teachers at every, all levels to go and visit every quarter to get different school supplies. So, we encourage you, if you want to donate to us, we'll take a donation for that, both monetarily as well as school supplies. But this particular with the Promise Award, we know it's so hard to get good quality educators in the system and this is one of the ways that we hope we can entice and retain some good people. And we were so, this award is so hard to do every year and it takes us about three weeks to actually get down to the winners. And we're lucky to have two of the four winners with us tonight.
So, two of the, we do have two of the award winners with us tonight. First, from Gibson Elementary, second grade teacher Melissa Saldivary. And an English teacher from Carver High School, Shanice Lyons. Not able to be here tonight from Union Cross is Brianna Cosmos and Samantha Roberts from Northwest Middle.
I would ask any of the folk that's in the audience here to support these folk, please stand up and help us to recognize, yes. Next, we will have Brad Oliver and Andrew Craft present the Music Performance Adjudication with excellent and superior ratings.
Chair Woodbury, Dr. Simington, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening to recognize our distinguished music programs that received an excellent or superior rating at Music Performance Adjudication this year. Music Performance Adjudication is a performance assessment for secondary band, chorus, and orchestra programs that provides teachers and students with feedback and a rating. MPA events in North Carolina are sponsored by either the North Carolina Music Educators Association or the North Carolina Band Masters Association. Ensembles perform selections from approved music lists for a panel of three judges and a piece they've never seen before for one judge. Those four ratings are combined into one rating, which can be either a superior, a one which is equivalent to an A, an excellent, which is basically a B, an average, a C, and so on. Each piece from the approved list is assigned a grade that ranges from grade one, which is basically a beginner level, to grade six, which is advanced. The grade level reflects the difficulty of the piece of music. The criteria determines, the grade level may include the complexity of the rhythms, meter, harmonic structure, variety of note values, rhythms, length of piece, and so on and so forth. The directors of the music programs that received a superior or excellent rating are here this evening to be recognized on behalf of their students and their program. And we will start with the directors from Atkins High School, Justin Sumner's Band, Greg Murphy Band Orchestra, and Valerie Davidson Chorus. The Wind Symphony received a superior rating in grade five, Mixed Chorus, superior rating, grade five, Honors Choir, excellent rating, grade six, and Orchestra, superior, grade four. From Clemens Middle School, we have Ron Forch, the band director, and the Contest Band received a superior rating in grade one-two split. From East Forsyth High School, Roman Brady is the chorus director. The Corral received an excellent in grade four, Madrigal, superior, grade six, and Caprice, superior, grade six. From Glenn High School, Carol Earnhardt is the chorus director. The Concert Choir received a superior in grade six, Men's Ensemble, superior, grade five, and Varsity Women, excellent, grade one-off list. From Haynes Magnet Middle School, Mary Catherine Bowman-Chot Band, Andrew Craft Band, Landon Bratt Chorus. The eighth grade Advanced Band received a superior in grade four, The Jazz and Dragons received a superior rating, eighth grade Mixed Choir, superior, grade three, and seventh grade Soprano Alto Choir, excellent, grade two. From Kernersville Middle School, Rebecca Hendricks could not be here tonight, but her chorus received a superior in grade three. From Metal Arc Middle School, Directors are Matt Liner Band and Patrick Shell Chorus. The eighth grade Band received a superior in grade three, The Jazz Band received a superior rating, Belavoche, superior, grade one, Camarada, excellent, grade one, Cantore, superior, grade one, Troubadours, excellent, grade one, and Meladors and Noteworthy, excellent, grade one. From Mount Tabor High School, Colin Chot is the band director and Ross Broadway is the chorus teacher. The Women's Ensemble received an excellent in grade four, Choral Ensemble, superior, grade five, and the Wind Ensemble, an excellent in grade five. From North Forsyth High School, Christian Orr is the band director and the band received an excellent in grade three. From Paisley IB Magnet School, Greg Dills is the band director, Fabrice Damraj is the orchestra teacher. The Advanced Band received a superior in grade three and the Orchestra, an excellent in grade two. From RJ Reynolds High School, Michael Martinez is the chorus teacher. His a cappella received a superior in grade six and treble chorus, excellent rating in grade four. From Ronald Reagan High School, Robert Johnston is the band director, Kenneth Tyser teaches band and orchestra, and Minyon Dobbins, who cannot be here tonight, teaches chorus. Her Belavoche received a superior in grade five, Women's Chorus, superior, grade four. The Reagan Concert Band received a superior, grade three, Symphonic Band, superior, grade five, Wind Ensemble, superior, grade six, Master Works, After School Jazz Ensemble, superior, Jazz Ensemble I, superior, Jazz Combo I, superior, Jazz Combo II, superior, and Orchestra, superior, grade six. From Southeast Middle School, Eugene Mayberry is the band director, Angel Rudd teaches chorus, and Haley Blunt is the orchestra teacher. The sixth grade treble received a superior rating in grade two and the seventh and eighth grade treble received a superior in grade two. The band received a superior in grade two and the orchestra, an excellent, in grade two. From Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Adam Joyner is the band director, Jessica Derochay is the chorus teacher, and Andy Light is the orchestra teacher. The band received a superior, grade three, chorus, superior, grade two, and orchestra, superior, grade two. From Waukertown Middle and High School, Quincy Lundie is the band director as well as Forrest Mundin. The high school band received a superior in grade four and the eighth grade band received a superior in grade two. From West Forsyth High School, Jacob Cook is the chorus teacher. The Chorus One received an excellent in grade four, Mixed Chorus an excellent in grade four, and Concert Choir, superior, grade six. And that concludes the recognition of our music programs. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're in the audience and here to support any of these folk or the schools, please stand up. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items. Please know, we reserve this time to hear comments only on the items that are on tonight's agenda, either for action or discussion. Direct your comments to me as the chair and know that while we are not able to respond, I may direct you to a staff member that can answer a question when appropriate. We do ask that you be respectful, kind, and know we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. While we hope it doesn't, should the comments become personal attacks, contentious, or otherwise disruptive, I reserve the right to end the comment period. You will have each three minutes to speak and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Thank you so much. And so, Brent Campbell wrote that for me to say. But I, well, he's the author. And it helps us to cover all that we need to say, but I really need to say something from the heart that's not scripted from Brent. I want you to know that this board is trying to develop a culture of kindness but concern. And what that means, I think, to us is that we know that our district is moving in the right direction and we have many challenges to overcome. And we appreciate when the public comes and give us your concerns, especially about what's going on in our schools. But it would really help us to continue to establish a culture of kindness and concern when the community understands that although you have concerns, if you would do it in such a way that does not put down anyone that's in our schools trying to do their best. And I know sometimes their best isn't good enough, but if you would just take into consideration and take it from me as an educator, and I've seen, you know, all on the spectrum. But I've never met a person in education that wakes up and say, "I want to go and destroy children's lives." That's just, it's just not the mission. You do your best. And I just ask that when you come up to take into consideration, although you may not like what's going on in our schools, that you try to direct your concerns as it relates to things specifically that you may not like versus any personnel or any persons. And I would also like to say that if you follow the guidelines of what we're asking you to speak on by way of our discussion items or our action items, that's very limited in scope. So, for instance, if you're talking to us tonight about climate, community, and equity, know that that is a committee and we had an agenda. And so, I can specifically remember that on the agenda for our most recent meeting, it was strictly about developing an equity policy and defining what is equity. So, if you're not talking as it relates to those specific items dealing with climate, community, and equity, you would be off task and I would have to ask you to wait until the open comments, which is towards the end of the meeting. So, I appreciate you all allowing me to go off script to speak to you from the heart. And the first person on the comments on our agenda is Rhonda Mays from the FCAE. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Woodbury, the board, and Dr. Simington. I'm Rhonda Mays, a school social worker here in this district, serving as full-time release president of Forsyth County Association of Educators. Tonight, I actually want to try to get in two things in these three minutes. One is the budget. You know, we are grateful and thankful for the partnership that we have with our Forsyth County Board of Commissioners and we are thankful for the funds that they have allocated, or they say they will allocate for the supplements. But the concern that educators are having is the restriction. The statement made that the funds will not be released until a schedule is sent. Question is, who's gonna approve and say that the schedule presented is satisfactory to them? So, I, we ask you to go back to the commissioners and find out what is gonna constitute an approval from them to release the funds. Or will it be one of those situations of, "Oh, you didn't do what we asked, so therefore you won't get the funds"? That's a problem. The second problem is that our classified or our education support professionals did not receive anything. And even at the state level, we're continuing to have discussions and advocating for them to receive an increase in the wages that they earn. So, we are also asking you, from Forsyth County Association of Educators, we represent all educators in our district who choose to be a member, that you also take a look at what we can do locally, since it appears that the state nor our county commissioners are gonna do anything for our classified salaries. And last, in the last moment, I would like to address the issue of our SROs. Safety is not one-dimensional and safety is not one-directional. Every student in our school district deserves to be in a school that is free and that is safe, that is structurally sound, and where they can be socially, emotionally secure. SROs are only one SROs are only one part of that equation. We must also take into consideration their social, emotional health and their well-being. And we do not want to experience unintentional consequences of having increased presence, police presence in our schools. Black and brown children are disciplined more in our district and in districts across the U.S. We do not want to continue to increase the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline by having more of a presence of police in our schools. So let's make certain we're addressing and we put safeguards in place that we don't have unintended consequences for our black and brown children in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Al Jabar.
Good evening, Chair, person Woodbury, Dr. Simington. I also come to speak on the SRO issue. You know, I volunteered at an elementary school, but also volunteer in the prison system. So my concern is, are we going to administer fairly the punishment? Because what happens is, black and brown kids are more apt to get a charge based on the statistics than any other kids. So if we put SROs or increase the presence of SROs in the school, I think it increases the opportunity for black and brown kids to enter into the prison pipeline. We must be aware that we cannot, our kids in the neighborhood, when the police come in the neighborhood, our kids are conditioned, black and brown kids are conditioned that this is a force that's against us. So when we bring them into the school and we expect these kids to change their mindset, unless these people that come in are culturally prepared to deal with the situation. I disagree with the increase of presence. I think that we need to train our staff, our leadership in the schools as to how to manage issues. And when you begin to put staffing together who do not understand the culture of black and brown kids, the result is we end up getting a charge and we go to the prison pipeline. That is so unfair. It is so unfair. We're setting up something, we're getting ready to set up an opportunity to increase the number of black and brown people in the prison system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Bissett. I talked to Ms. Burrow, who's on the list, and she's going to go during our open public comments. Next, we have Donna Bissett.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. My name is Donna Bissett. I have three adult sons, all of whom went from kindergarten through 12th grade in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. I believe that you're here because you care about the children in our community. I'm here because as a mother and as a community member, I also believe that our children deserve an opportunity to thrive and ultimately contribute to our society. And that means that they should be able to go to school every day without fear. So first of all, I would encourage you to refer to the Keeping Our Schools Safe document from the National Education Association, the American Federation of Teachers and Everytown for Gun Safety for guidance as you work to do just that, keep our schools safe. One consideration that is discussed in that document is the use and source of SROs. And I hear and understand that there are a variety of concerns, but I believe that our newly-elected sheriff would be very sensitive to those concerns and would be willing to train officers from his department in their role, not only as law enforcement officer, but as informal counselor and mentor. And I believe that the sheriff's office would do a much better job than any independent contractor could do. And now that the state superintendent has announced the statewide partnership with Sandy Hook Promise and in particular, the Say Something program and app, I believe that SROs under guidance from the sheriff's office could be instrumental as we roll out this powerful new program. So let's do everything that we can to make sure that we are not the next tragic headline and let's do it now.
Thank you. Misty Nichols.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury.
Good evening.
Members of the Board and Dr. Simington. I'm here today as a concerned parent, speaking on the topic of SROs. I'm also education lead for our local chapter of Moms Demand Action and a promise leader for Sandy Hook Promise. Chairwoman Woodbury was recently quoted. Safety issues are very apparent. We're seeing scenarios that we wouldn't dare think would come our way in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. Obviously, there are monetary costs to this, but we cannot put a cost on our children's lives. I could not agree more. As the Board considers a new SRO contract, I ask you again to look at the Keeping Our Schools Safe document authored by the AFT, the NEA and Everytown for Gun Safety. This document addresses the root causes of school violence, draws upon research and recommendations from school safety experts and shares a plan focused on intervention and prevention. I want to begin by saying that my opinion about the need for SROs doesn't negate the fact that we need more mental health resources. I fully realize NC public schools are underserved across the board. I believe in a proactive approach to school safety, one that addresses the multi-layered issue of school violence, including mental health resources, threat assessment, school safety programs and reporting tools, security upgrades in staff, planning for emergencies and promoting safe and equitable schools. The combination of these measures can help address violence at its earliest stages. We hear about striking a balance between psychological and physical safety. Both are critically important, but today we're talking about SROs. The National Association of School Resource Officers recommends a triad concept to define the role of SROs as educator and formal counselor and mentor and law enforcement officer. SROs are not meant to be security guards. For consistency of programming and training, one agency should manage the program. I believe our sheriff's office is best equipped to manage the program. We also need SROs at the elementary level. There are many benefits to officers building relationships beginning at an early age. Many counties in our state have had this in place since the Sandy Hook tragedy. We've recently learned that our state superintendent has approved the Say Something app for NC schools, making us the second state to partner statewide with Sandy Hook Promise, and that makes me happy. I hope to see our system as one of the first counties to implement the program and the app. My final point, other states have used SROs as key resources and leaders in rolling out the Say Something app and program. There have been many successes in following this structure. Let's start thinking of our SROs as more than just reactive security guards and make it a requirement and standard that in this county, they are proactive partners in school safety and in prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Scho.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I attended last week's School Choice Committee meeting and I've been thinking about it ever since, so here I am to talk about it. Y'all were talking through magnet schools and transportation and Mr. Walker said that our current transportation setup for school assignment and choice is not sustainable. We do not have enough drivers to fulfill all the demand of the plethora of options for which our district guarantees busing and this problem will only be exacerbated in the future. Mr. Walker also stated that our district has the most complicated transportation system in the state. That's a whole lot of resources being spent right there. I can't say I'm surprised by this. I watch three elementary school buses, usually, sometimes in a row, go through my neighborhood every day. But I am surprised by the lack of discussion that I've heard about this enormous district-wide problem and what I perceive as the lack of urgency to find a viable solution. Our current school assignment model was implemented in 1995, 24 years ago. Surely, it is prudent to reexamine policies that are decades old. Even if you think this current model is great, if only we could afford it, then we have discussed it and your point has been proven. But I can't believe that our current model is our best way forward. Our schools are segregated, about half our schools are low-performing, our achievement gap is large. We have facilities in dire need of repair. We don't have enough money to pay our staff, what we all say they are worth. Yet we continue on with this unsustainable choice model, which we know is only choice by name. It's not really choice for all. Our district gives narratives to families. You can pick any school in your zone that works best for your kid. You don't like your neighborhood school, even though you've never been in it and you don't really know anything about it. That's fine. We'll pay money and put you on a bus to send you elsewhere. Or how about a magnet school that speaks to your interest, even though you're only five years old? We'll give you a bus. We're all about best for the individual student, but what about doing right by all students? I'm going to close with part of an article from Jordan Green, who wrote in the Triad City Beat last year about our district specifically. He says, "The choice plan, which has resulted in increasing racial and socioeconomic segregation, has created a vicious cycle. Urban schools that serve high percentages of students who are qualifying for free and reduced lunch, predominantly black and brown, become less appealing and parents with resources opt to send their children elsewhere. Based with the challenges of educating students in schools with high levels of poverty, teachers also typically prefer assignments elsewhere. As a result, urban schools with high levels of poverty become underpopulated. Meanwhile, suburban schools with higher percentages of white students and higher academic performance become overcrowded and thus receive priority for replacement or expansion, while urban schools are subject to a downward cycle of disinvestment." Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Dunn.
Chairman Woodbury, Board, Dr. Simington. Couple of issues I'm here to speak upon. The first one is the calendar. Looking at 2020 and the upcoming election in November the 10th, that was going to be a huge day. And I know there's been discussion in the community across the state about making that a optional teacher workday, so that way the students aren't there and additional traffic is not also built into the school. Talking about safety, the SRO situation. We're looking at extending the contract. I ask that you hold off until we get the new superintendent and get his or her input on what it would look like from his or her perspective on the additional expense. Because you're looking to increase that contract anywhere to about a million dollars if you look at if you're going to just put them in the high schools. And I think that may be something that we can apply that money to healthcare workers or additional social workers, especially in the high schools, to give that intervention that we may need to make a better situation instead of spending money. Because studies have shown that people of color, especially young adults, children, basically what they are, are sometimes challenged and that we don't want them to get a record or we don't want them to be disciplined by people who are not the ones who should be disciplining them in a way that in their loving, caring nature that we do. Not to say our head sheriff and his deputies would not do a good job of doing that, but it's just the appearance that we want to develop a relationship that will be long-lasting, not one of challenge or conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury.
Good evening.
Board and Dr. Simington. I'm here to address the climate, culture and equity. But tonight, I'm here not to address generics, but my specific situation in children.
Mr. Allen, before you start, is it going to connect to the most recent agenda from the climate, community and equi... Thank you, sir.
What I would like to speak about is equity for our AIG children. As it stands now, our AIG children are not being served as they should be served. What is a priority? Priority here in this district seems like something we talk a lot about from time to time, never do anything about, and when someone asks about it, they're ignored. So why do I keep speaking again and again when nothing ever changes? I feel if I speak publicly and present the facts, then the Board knows I know and the public knows there's an issue. And "we were not aware" can never again be used as an excuse. Brunson Elementary has traditionally been the HAG elementary school. But in the past 10-plus years, that campus has deteriorated to the point that it is considered the worst campus in the district. Parents must now consider whether they want to send their scholars to such a dilapidated facility in order to take advantage of the HAG opportunity. When parents consider Brunson, if they look at the NC School Report Card, they see that Brunson's performance grade has steadily dropped from 76 in 2014 to 62 in 2018. Growth has dropped from exceeded growth, 85.3 in 2014, to 62.3, not metting growth in 2018. More disturbing, the AIG students did not meet growth this past year. And in science, 7% of the AIG students scored a 2 on their 2018 EOG. That's not grade level proficient. They're supposed to be either one or two grade levels above standard. In the past few years, the numbers opting out of AIG has risen from 25% eligible to 55% eligible. At Haynes, where my son will go next year, two subgroups show suspension rates of 1,668 and 1,625 students per 1,000 students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The last person is Katie Sonnenlee.
Excuse me. I'm primarily going to talk about, I'm sorry. My name is Katie Sonnenlee. You all know me. I'm primarily here to talk about the SRO contract, but I also wanted to commend you all for looking at the Bethlehem Area School District Literacy Program. I am really happy to see that the school system is looking into research-based, evidence-based and evidence-backed solutions to our achievement gap and literacy problem here in the school system. So thank you. I wanted to really echo what Rhonda Mays and Mr. Jabar said about having more SROs in our school. So many children are traumatized by seeing police in their school where they should feel safe because police, no matter what the situation, they may have had a difficult situation with a police officer, either coming into their family or their life during a domestic violence situation. I used to work with survivors of domestic violence. The kids weren't at fault, of course. But just seeing a police officer brought all that back to them. You know, their father getting arrested, police lights, all of that. So you have to think about having more police in schools. Is that really the best way? Or is that going to trigger even more trauma and more problems for children? I also wanted to say, the SROs and police are not trained to be counselors and social workers in mental health intervention. That's not their job. They're police officers first. We have employees that do that, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, all of those people. Those are the ones that should be intervening with children and stepping in for this intervention and prevention model, which is what we need to focus on. It's not a police officer's job. That's not what their training is. That's not what they should be in school to do. I also wanted to read a few numbers off. I think statistics are really important to look at. Last year, in 2017, well, not, in 2017, which is last year, we have numbers for it. There were over 1,100 juvenile court complaints in Forsyth County. 56% of those came from schools. That's 635 student referrals. There's only 180 days in a school year. That's three kids per day being put into the school-to-prison pipeline. We do not need more SROs. We need more intervention with kids, more support, more services, so that we don't have more students being put into the school-to-prison pipeline. It's traumatizing. It's hard to get out of and it disproportionately affects black and brown kids. Black children comprise 28% of our school district demographics, but 52% at the court referrals, not because they behave any differently than white students. They behave exactly the same. white students, they behave exactly the same, but they're getting referred more often for the exact same behaviors. We really need to look at that, so I'm urging you to look into this more deeply before we put more SROs into our school system and how we can put more actual support personnel, counselors, social worker, psychologists, nurses into the school system.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. The first item is the Bethlehem Area School District Report. Michael Rogers and I think Sharon Ralston will come up and give us the report. I will say, as they are coming up, that our community is very engaged with our efforts to increase literacy in our community, and a group of community folk were invited to go to Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, because they're doing very exciting, progressive work with literacy, and if they stay on track with their growth model through dibbles, we should see, you know, a school district turn, you know, a one-eighty with expectations with their literacy scores. So I was a part of a group that included also Michael Rogers and Sharon Ralston and Chris Cox and...
Jonathan Kelly.
Jonathan Kelly, thank you. We all went to Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and the group put together a report for the board and the community to be able to, you know, capture the highlights that we would see and want to share with our community as it relates to ideally increasing our literacy score, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury, board members, and Dr. Simington. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Michael Rogers and I'm joined here with my friend Sharon Ralston. We came here today as concerned and hopeful Forsyth County citizens to report to you on our findings from a visit to Bethlehem Area School District in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Sharon and I both are very interested in literacy and reading education reform, but we've come to it in different ways. Sharon has a teacher and tutor, she's been a teacher and tutor for many years and currently is an Augustine tutor at Gibson Elementary. I work in local business community and met Sharon while serving on the board of REWS. While we're both proud volunteers of REWS, we are not here tonight as representatives of the program. Many of us read an article published last year in September of eighteen called "Hard Words: Why Aren't Kids Being Taught to Read?" by Emily Hanford. She's an education consultant, and Bethlehem Area School District was featured in her article and has, as a result, received a lot of national attention and acclaim. And we were captivated by what we read, we looked into it further, and with a very healthy dose of skepticism, we wanted to learn more. So after some persistence and quite a bit of luck, we were able to take a small group from our community to visit Bethlehem in March of this year. We went as skeptical reporters and we compiled a report of our findings dated March twentieth of this year, sent to you earlier. What Sharon will now share with you is a short slide presentation truly, that's truly remarkable. There's actually a lot of reading and literacy reform going on right now in different parts of the country, in Nashville, Arkansas, Mississippi, New York City, to name a few. We've looked at a lot of those efforts, but nothing is as compelling as what we've seen in Bethlehem.
Thank you, Michael. So Bethlehem as a model, I'm going to try to go cover the key findings as quickly as I can. The one thing is it works for all students, not some, but we discovered that it worked for all students. And our goal was to thoroughly examine the program and although somewhat skeptical, as Michael said, that we found that the results speak for themselves. Our group traveled across the district and saw schools with vastly different demographics. Mind-blowing really to us was the discovery that these schools looked the same inside, that they were producing remarkable results. The achievement gap has practically been eliminated in Bethlehem in grades K through three. For example, kindergarten classes at two schools, one with their highest percentage of free and reduced lunch and one with their lowest percentage of free and reduced lunch, both of these schools completely eliminated their students in kindergarten dibbling in red. Unique to Bethlehem is their fully comprehensive plan with interrelated components, each equally important. For example, professional development methodology is directly linked to their reading materials in the classroom, and schools use the same methods and processes. Students and teachers were all highly engaged and we saw no bored students. A surprise to us was that the results at Bethlehem were achieved so quickly, within one year. It didn't take extended period of times and multiple pilot studies. So here's just one example, this is the kindergarten results district-wide after three years of implementation. This slide demonstrates the immediate and sustained success for the Bethlehem Literacy Project, highlighting kindergarten here as this was their first cohort in the five-year plan. As the pie charts show, kindergarteners improved from forty-seven percent at reading benchmark to eighty-four percent in just the first year. Proof of concept of Bethlehem are the results at Lincoln Elementary, one of their poorest performing schools. We met with the principal of that school and she reported that she had gone from an average of fifty students qualifying annually for tier-three intensive instruction to only four students in the entire school last year. One interesting finding, upon rollout, the greatest pushback was from kindergarten teachers. They revolted because they felt like the goals were developmentally inappropriate for kindergarteners. Bethlehem leaders then shifted the process and so that all the principals would be trained first. The principals became the reading specialists, they became the leaders for teacher support. And despite the initial pushback from teachers, Bethlehem reports that there's been little turnover since the program rolled out and a noticeable mind shift among teachers. This next, if I could only show one slide tonight, this would be the slide I would show you. It digs deeper, but it emphasizes that how Bethlehem has basically closed their achievement gap. At the end of 2016, at the end of the first year of their program, following one year, Freemanburg Elementary, the top row, among the highest of the free and reduced lunch schools, improved their end-of-year dibble scores, their yellow and red combined there, from sixty-five percent of their kindergarten students below benchmark reading to only four percent at the end of one year. Put another way, this school went from only thirty-eight percent of their kindergarteners reading at benchmark to ninety-six percent in just one year. Hanover Elementary, the bottom row, is a high-performing school in Bethlehem. It's among one of their lowest of free and reduced lunch, and it also demonstrated remarkable improvement. They went from seventy-six percent of their kindergarteners at benchmark to ninety-four percent. And these two schools, they're not outliers. Bethlehem has at least six elementary schools with over seventy percent students at free or reduced lunch, eleven Title I schools, and all had significant gains in the first year. Also, of their four schools with the lowest qualifying for free and reduced lunch, their results at benchmark at the end of the year are all approaching one hundred percent proficient. The last two pie charts, over to your right, tell the compelling story, that the charts look the same. It's no longer possible to differentiate the schools when comparing reading results. Our group witnessed this qualitatively while touring various schools. When debriefing after our trip, we couldn't remember which schools were the Title I schools and which schools were not. The activity, the engagement, the instruction, all looked the same in every classroom. So what is required? Our group discovered that the key components dependent of each other are required to produce these kinds of results. District leaders, as well as principals and teachers, emphasize the importance of these components as the key to their success. What are these five? Top-down support is imperative. Strong central support to manage change and assist with implementation. All leaders in Bethlehem have ownership, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, their literacy supervisor, all the principals. There is no delegation of ownership. All parties fully understand the program and the process. The district literacy supervisor and the principals are all leaders and support for the teachers. There are no silos of responsibilities for outcome, they are all in, they collectively own the results. Second, the curriculum is scientifically research-based reading instruction. They chose the Wonders curriculum to align with their professional development, which is letters, and they use it exclusively and consistently across their elementary schools. For example, all but five approved reading support materials are in every single elementary classroom. A child could change schools in the middle of the school year and will land in the same environment. Three, coaching is aligned with professional development and the classroom curriculum. Coaching involves modeling and confidential feedback. The teachers there are supported with confidentiality agreements, contracts with the coaches. It is not a punitive system for teachers, it's supportive, and the school system, everyone knows that fail forward is their motto. Four, increased instructional time, a hundred and forty minutes daily for K through two and a hundred and twenty minutes daily for three through five. And this sounds unsurmountable, or insurmountable rather, and we thought so, but Bethlehem said that creative leadership, along with their trained consultants, developed improved time management models for their teachers. They revised their MTSS model and they pushed it to the classroom, they flipped the classroom. Students needing intensive support will be working with a lead teacher rather than sent out of the classroom to a specialist. The lead classroom teacher is the reading specialist. Assistants will be working with those students that needs less support. And finally, Bethlehem contracted with consultants and they share accountability with these external experts to help manage the professional development for teachers and the change management. Notable to our group was the atmosphere of trust and support among the coaches and the teachers. Coaches also work ongoing with principals and district leadership.
So thank you again, the big observations, no need to reinvent the wheel, the formula achieved, quick results, comprehensive plan, and supportive and knowledgeable superintendent and district leadership, key to success. It was such an exciting opportunity to experience this program. We have an opportunity now to do something bold for our children while respecting the past and where we've been. Our next superintendent has the opportunity to take bold action. Please consider these concepts we discussed tonight when making your decision about a new leader. For what I've learned in Bethlehem, it was tough at times, they've had, it was time-consuming, they've had inconsistent results initially, and it required a lot of financial resources, but you know, nothing worth doing is easy. Bethlehem also, as a result of all this, achieved remarkable results quickly, and these outcomes have been proven sustainable. It was a one-year development, not years of study, and it had dramatic results. Their template, we think, is scalable, without a doubt it's scalable and it can be implemented in a larger district like ours with the right leadership. Again, just want to thank the school board for all your work on our behalf in seeking this new leader for our district. We hope that our findings are helpful in the process and we're happy to discuss this in more detail with you anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Darrell Walker, who's going to talk to us about the SRO contracts. Oh, I'm sorry, Jonathan is coming up. It had Darrell Walker in my notes, so...
Good evening, Chair Woodbury.
Good evening.
Dr. Simington and board. Going to kind of go quickly through this, it's got a lot of slides, some of these things I know you guys have seen before, but first off, right off the bat, I want to tell you that safety and security of our students and staff is our number-one priority. A lot of time and planning goes into what we do. We've been planning tabletop exercise for this coming summer, and I was speaking to RB Cheatham with the Olson Group, who does a lot of planning for Homeland Security, and he's kind of overseeing our project, and he had looked at our plans and thought, and told me that he thought that we were well ahead of the game and looked really good in Forsyth County. So he said that without even seeing how we performed this summer, so we'll see how that goes. The SRO program is probably the most visible part of what we do, although it is not, it is only part of what we do. Just to go real quickly, obviously besides the SRO program, we have SNS cameras, those are going to be increased as part of the 2016 bond, access control. Those two-end devices are now at all of our middle schools, and we've had great success with students using those key pads to keep the schools safe as they come and go through the back doors to the modulars. The new visitor management system with Identikit in all of our schools, visitor and staff badge protocol, even though that doesn't sound like a big deal, it is, it's important for us to know who's walking around our campus, so we could use Identikit, but if we don't have this, so that I can identify staff or somebody else can, it does us no good. Detailed policies and procedures on how to react and how to deal with situations. Corliss Thompson, Drew and I work closely as far as dealing with not just SROs and safety and security, but also with social, emotional needs of students. We have critical incident pre-planning maps, and that's a big key to what we do in case something happens. We've used those on multiple occasions. Hopefully, we never have to use them, but when they're there, they're very valuable. Crisis manage app, each one of our SROs and each one of our staff members, as far as APs and principals, central office staff have this on our phone, so that it's a quick reminder if something comes up that we make sure that we check all the boxes and cross all of our Ts. Emergency notifications, anytime something happens, over five hundred folks are notified so that we can take action. Our Bully Patrol and tip line has been merged, and we've got fantastic results, and we've seen throughout the past school year that students are telling us what they see in the classroom and letting not only the SRO, but staff members know what's going on in the school. We have a drill scheduled that we follow closely to make sure that we practice all these things. But our SRO program, currently we have three SRO agreements with the Criminal Police Department, with the Winston-Salem Police Department, and Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. In the past, those contracts were different, each one had different information, what the requirements were, what they wanted in the contract, what we did, those have been combined and collapsed into a standard contract. There are little nuances that are out there between the eight, or they may vary between agencies, but overall, those contracts are pretty standardized. So this past year, and since 2008, Criminal Police Department's been on board, they have these schools that you see before you, and they also service, where they have a middle school, they also serve those elementary schools very closely. The Sheriff's Department has been contracted with us since 2009. I think they had a few more schools in 2011 and kind of collapsed back to these six schools that they have now. And then the other remaining twenty schools, which obviously is, most of our schools lie within the city limits of Winston-Salem, are served by the Winston-Salem Police Department, and that's been the case since 2011. Duties of the SRO, so basically the purpose, the most important purpose of the SRO program is to provide for general safety and security of our students and staff members during the school day and at school-related events. But their specific duties are, they're responsible for answering questions and educating students regarding the criminal justice system and law enforcement agencies and functions of those. Counseling students in special situations, if requested by the principal or by the parent. A lot of times, a parent will come and ask the SRO to have a conversation with their student. Being present at the bus lot and other areas that may be important throughout the day. So in the cafeterias, obviously, where students are congregating, it's important that they be present and be seen to be able to react quickly when things happen. And providing extra security during our extracurricular, extra-class activities, that is an additional cost, that is not covered on the contract. The rate is set, but when they serve at football games, when they serve at special events, that is an additional cost to the school and to the district. The SRO is responsible for investigating criminal activity committed on our property that may be by a student. Some cases, it could be by a staff member, but a lot of times, it's by somebody in the community who has come onto our property, and they would obviously deal with that and investigate. They assist in enforcement of criminal laws, enforcement of board policies regarding students that are also crimes. So it's illegal for someone under age of twenty-one to have alcohol, but if alcohol's there, obviously it's a crime, so they get involved. They respond to disruptions and criminal offenses on the property. The SRO will not become involved in administrative, non-criminal school investigations or searches unless requested by the principal, or unless that search uncovers evidence of a criminal misconduct. And the SRO will not become involved in school discipline or supervise students, so they will not be the primary person on a bus line. There will be staff members out there as well, and then so that if needed, the SRO can help, but they are not the sole supervision of students. In some cases, the SRO will transport students in law enforcement vehicles when there's incident to a law enforcement function, if they're being transported to the manager's office for whatever reason, if they're being transported to the courthouse, sometimes they're being transported home to have a discussion with the parents about something that may have happened. But there are other situations where the SRO could possibly be transporting a student that is not related, and those instances, the SRO could transport a student as related to their agency policy, so they don't just transport kids home because they missed a school bus. Key agreement terms, each contract provides for no less than one full-time officer at each of the covered schools. at each of the covered schools. This next bullet actually belongs to the one below it. So, the contract also provides for supervision. And we define supervision as being a lieutenant, a sergeant, or a corporal. KPD does not have corporals, but they have other officers that they use in that kind of same role. But that's how we would define supervision. Currently, we have at least one SRO in every middle and high school in our county, with the exception of middle and early college. And the reason why they're not there, because they sit on Forsyth County, at Forsyth Technical Community College campus, and there's police officers there that are part of that college. And then, there's been an additional officer placed at Reagan and West, and we'll discuss that a little bit further shortly. Deion, you might want to help me here, but you want to talk about this part?
Good evening. As part of the contract, SRO officers are allowed access to certain sensitive student information. There's a classification of information called directory information, which is information like name, address, email address, participation in sports, class rosters, that sort of thing. Information that, if it were to be shared with others, is not generally considered of the nature that it would violate a student's privacy. And so, several years ago, we amended our policy to allow SRO officers to have access to directory information at the schools that they serve. But then, the contract also provides for officers to be able to access certain other information, so long as we comply with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which is FERPA. In addition to access to information under certain circumstances, our SROs are considered to be jointly responsible for the monitoring and operation of our school surveillance cameras. They have passwords, they're able to access them. If there's something that happened, they have the ability to go in and look and see as a part of their criminal investigation. Our SROs also wear body worn cameras. And so, since these are issued pursuant to their law enforcement agency, these are not camera systems that we, as a school district, have access to. Anything that's captured on a body worn camera is considered a criminal investigative record. And so, it's not subject to public records, and we don't have access to that. So, the compensation for the current contract for the three agencies is on the screen. This is how much we pay for SRO services this school year. This will look different for next year, but this is the current cost of the program for this school year. And as Jonathan said, extra duty compensation is in addition to that. Under the current contract, the rates for all three agencies is thirty dollars for an officer, thirty-five dollars for a supervisor. For the Sheriff's Office and the Winston-Salem Police Department, that will increase by five dollars next year. However, the Kernsville Police Department is not projecting an increase in those costs for next year. So, you have, before I turn it back to Jonathan, I do want to just note, you do have a copy of the materials that were provided to you of the current SRO contract for this school year. For the most part, like Jonathan mentioned, the contracts for next year will look very much the same. We are in the process now of finalizing some details and some minor revisions to the contract for the three agencies. But for the most part, the contracts that will be presented to you at your next board meeting will look very, very similar to how they currently look. So, I will turn it back over to Jonathan to go over the budget process. Yes, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question concerning the contracts that we have with SROs and several slides back. Because I think one of the really confusing things for the public is that their understanding of the reason for SROs and the district's contract with the SROs might be a little bit different. And the reason I think that's important is, for example, SROs are to investigate or deal with criminal behavior that happens in a school, but they're not there predominantly to protect our schools from shooters, for example. And that the, looking at what the contract talks about, it doesn't talk about school shooting. It actually talks about criminal behavior. And I think our assumption is that if there's an armed SRO in the school, that they could somehow intervene. But I think it's really important to pay great attention to what the contract actually says, which is to investigate criminal activity in the schools. The other thing I think is really important, and perhaps we could talk more about, is the ongoing training with both principals and assistant principals and all of our staff about what is a discipline issue that should ideally be taken care of by administrators versus what is criminal activity or that should be referred to SROs. So, could you address those two concerns?
Sure. To the first concern, you are correct in that active shooter is not specifically listed in the SRO contract. I think as a general principle, the SRO, the MOUs are designed to address the day-to-day functions and responsibilities of the school resource officers. Of course, if, knock on wood, we never have that scenario or don't have that scenario. The SRO officer, as a law enforcement officer, would be there to participate, but all three agencies would probably send the cavalry to address that situation. So, it's not intended for the SRO officer to be the sole responder in a situation like that, in a crisis situation.
Or any situation that feels dangerous to a school. Because my understanding has been that law enforcement has been extremely responsive to any threat on a campus that they indeed say, that we don't leave it to the SRO in the building to address what is considered threats, that they get backup immediately. Is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
I would say, Ms. Mousinger, at the time that an active shooter or something like that happened on campus, the SRO becomes not an SRO at that point, it becomes a hunter and to go find that person. So, that is not in the contract.
Go find that person after they've contacted law enforcement.
Well, I'm saying that the SRO would then become, you know, they're going to call for help and then they're going to go looking for that shot and to deal with it. So, obviously, they're still an SRO, but their role would change at that point. And you're right, there would be an overwhelming response to that school with fifty, maybe a hundred officers showing up from different agencies, from local to federal.
To speak to your second point about the training for principals and assistant principals, we try to emphasize on an annual basis, whether it's through the summer trainings or other trainings throughout the year, the importance of the school administrator being the first responder to disciplinary incidences. Just because of the fact that not every disciplinary incident involving students results in a referral to law enforcement, or should result in a referral to law enforcement. The statute does mandate that certain offenses, there's a list of about ten or so, are required by law to be reported to law enforcement. And these are your kind of really big, bad things, you know, sexual assault, sexual offense, kidnapping, et cetera. But otherwise, there is a classification of minor offenses that might also be a crime, but is appropriate for it to be handled at the administrative level. An example would be theft. If a student steals another student's cell phone, yes, that is a crime, but it's also something that could be dealt with appropriately at the school level. Does that answer your question? So, I'm going to turn it back over, unless there are other questions, I'm going to turn it back over to Jonathan to talk about the budget process leading up to this year.
So, the next few slides are basically just to show you, or tell you how we got to where we are. So, before February, we like to have everything in place. These are the numbers that we got, that we received from the three agencies as things are today. We had no idea that things were going to change at the time that this started. So, for the nineteen-twenty school year, Winston-Salem Police Department gave us a cost of two million, four forty-one, and nine forty. The Sheriff's Department gave us an estimated budget of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. KPD gave us an SRO budget request of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two. On January the thirty-first, we met with the Sheriff's Office at the County Commissioners, and the Sheriff advised us at that time that he was going to place two additional officers, one at Reagan, one at West, to serve alongside. It was going to be covered at the Sheriff's Department's cost. There would be no additional cost to the district through this school year. And we saw it as an opportunity to see how things went. On the following day, then we got the following, the follow-up budget, again, it was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars roughly, to stay with things as they currently are. And then, option two was to, for us to take on the cost for Reagan and West. Again, at this time, we had no thought that anything was going to change. We had our budget meeting, we gave a request for four million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four. That was an increase of three hundred and sixty-six thousand and some odd dollars from the previous school year. And again, it's based on the current model with Winston-Salem keeping twenty schools, Sheriff's Department having six schools, and Kernsville having their four schools. On April the first, we met with the Police Department and was notified by Chief Thompson that she was, that her department was going to be withdrawing from the SRO program and begin with four schools for the coming school year. And so, the next few weeks, we get our proposals. The Sheriff's Department gave us a proposal to reduce, to increase from six to ten schools. The proposal was to increase from six SROs, one rover, two supervisors, to fourteen SROs, one rover, and three supervisors for those four schools, with an increase in the budget that we had projected going up to one point six million dollars. On four twenty-five, we got the reduction from the Police Department, where they lost four schools, going down to sixteen. They decreased from nineteen SROs, one rover, seven supervisors, to fifteen SROs, one rover, and five supervisors. So, basically, they lost four SROs, one sergeant, and one corporal. That cost decreased from the two point four to one point eight million dollars. And then, this past week, we received a cost decrease from the other cost to one point five million dollars from the Sheriff's Department. So, that was a little bit different cost. So, the four schools that will change as we move forward would be Parkland High School, Glenn High School, Follow Hill, and Main Street Academy. And the Sheriff's Department has proposed to assign two SROs at each of the four high schools, which will be Parkland, Glenn, Parkland, Glenn, West, and Reagan, sorry. So, these are the changes from our budget request, I told you about a minute ago. So, Kerns will stay the same. Winston's decreased by five hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. The Sheriff's Department, with that new number, is an increase of seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And the extra duty rates that Deion spoke about increase as well. So, from the projected budget, with the four additional officers at each of the high schools, there would be an increase in the budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. So, a total increase from last year's budget of five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So, the new request would be four million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's a lot of numbers. So, I think there's, we have one additional slide, I think, if you want to talk about that. So.
As I mentioned before, the contracts that we're going to come back to you in a couple of weeks are going to look, for the most part, the same or similar to what you have in front of you. But I did want to just briefly talk about some of the other minor changes we're proposing. We're proposing to kind of broaden the language about the officer's duty to patrol around the campus to allow more flexibility instead of being confined to certain areas in the schools. We also want to specify that SRO officers are being asked to attend the graduations for the schools that they attend. That wasn't specified in the contract before, but we'd like to make that clear. In October of 2018, there was a legislative change that required school resource officer training for all SROs. That's offered by the Academy of Justice. That has to happen within twelve months of being appointed as an SRO. So, we added that to the contract to ensure that all the SROs have the appropriate required training. We're also, are including some language in there, asking for the various agencies to cooperate with our chief marketing and communications officer whenever there is a public event or a media release that involves one of our schools or occurs on our campus. And then, for the schools that do have, or that will ultimately have two officers at the school, we also are asking for some assistance in the area of traffic control in the mornings and the afternoons with buses and cars and that sort of thing. So, that's just a really quick overview of some of the proposed changes for next year.
So, my question is, if we're proposing changes and going to be putting actual language into the contracts that's different, are we going to put in, so, when Jonathan says the SRO becomes a hunter in the case of an active shooter, are we going to be putting in language that says, in the case of an active shooter, this is our expectation? And part of that is because, again, I think that's what the public is assuming is the role of an SRO, and that that's what they would be doing. And therefore, if we're talking about language in a contract, I think it should, we need to be explicit with that language and not just make the assumption that that's the case.
And I, if I could interrupt here, I think active shooter would fall under criminal activity. And I think, I would hesitate to get specific with which activities and what you expect from them, but that they assess each situation and then follow their training. So, I would be hesitant to name specific things. I mean, what if somebody's, you know, setting bombs all around the camp? We can't identify every single thing. So, I think just saying that they're in charge of assessing criminal activity is comprehensive.
Or school safety in particular. And again, the reason I want to be very precise about this is that folks feel very strongly about the presence of an armed officer in the school. I think with a particular assumption that those officers will be doing certain things that are not clearly stated in the contract. And if we're updating contracts, we're putting in proposed changes, I think putting in explicit language, because that's what people talk to me about or are concerned about, is specifically safety of the building, what happens in the case of a threat. And I think there's no reason, if that is, particularly if that's some of the argument that's being put forward as to why a second person would be a good idea, then it should be in the contract and it should, we should be very explicit about that expectation.
It has, it has not been proposed. However, I will certainly, certainly take it under consideration. I do think, I mean, not to, not to certainly diminish what you're proposing, but I do think it would fall within their general duty to respond and investigate and be involved in criminal activity, as well as their legal duty as a sworn law enforcement officer. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments about?
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Alex Hoskins, and she's going to present the 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 school calendars.
So, good evening, Chair Woodbury, Dr. Simington, members of the board. We have two different things to kind of talk about tonight. The first one is the 2019, 2020 school calendar. And for that, for this coming school year, October sixteenth was part of the approved calendar for an early release day. However, the College Board has come out and said that that's going to be the nationwide administration of the PSAT. And it's very difficult for high schools to administer a test of that duration and that magnitude on the same day as an early release day, which has shortened instructional time. It's difficult to get the kids into the testing, out of the testing, into lunch before it's time for them to get back on the buses and head home. So, staff is recommending that we change the early release day to October ninth, and we're asking for that to be decided tonight so that schools can prepare accordingly. Sometimes they get outside contracts signed for professional development and things like that. So, we want to give schools the opportunity to adequately prepare as they move into the fall. Any questions about that request? All right, then let's talk 2021. This year, we did something a little bit different. So, traditionally, we look at the school calendar a year and a half in advance. So, just to be mindful, this is not, we're not talking about the calendar that starts in 2019, that starts in August. This is a year out from now, because families need time to prepare and so do school staffs and employees. So, this year, we did something a little different to kind of kick off the 2021 calendar because annually, I get lots and lots and lots of emails and questions about, why didn't you do the calendar this way, and why didn't you do the calendar that way, and how did you come up with the calendar, and lots of questions. So, to address that, we opened up the create the calendar opportunity to the community and all stakeholders and invited folks, giving them the specific guidelines and the restrictions under state, current state law. We gave them the chance to create calendars and submit them for consideration. So, I received sixty-four responses to that opportunity, and nine of them actually met the criteria. Of those nine, we selected the ones that kind of really met the criteria and that were in the best interest of, and showed best interest of staff and students, and also that showed a little bit of a variety, because you have to have them be distinct from each other in order for the process to move forward. from each other in order for, for the process to move forward. So, we sent out four for consideration and for a survey, and we had 4,201 responses. And you can see there the breakdown of who responded. And then, I did include all four options that I'm not going to go through, the individual options for you. I did receive one question that I'll make sure that I address, but we have four options, two that were designed by community members and two that were designed by employees. Survey responses, of those 4,201 responses, we had the breakdown that is on your screen with option B at 32% receiving the most votes for approval. So, option B has the following highlights. So, the question that I received was to compare option A to option B because those were the first two vote-getters. So, I'll try to provide some of the distinctions between those, those two. Option B offers six days in August at the start of the school year for teacher workdays. Option A only provided five. So, this one has an extra workday at the beginning of the school year. This calendar does have a teacher workday on October 26th at the end of the first quarter, as well as a teacher workday on November 3rd, which is in fact, the National Election Day, not November 10th as, as referenced during the public comments. So, we did actually cover in all four of the options having a teacher workday on the date of the next presidential election so that we can allow our staff to be able to the opportunity to make sure that they can vote, and that it also helps to not have students on campus on those days because so many of our campuses are used as polling sites. This calendar also, if you move into December, offers a full two weeks for a winter break. Winter break starts on December 21st and runs all the way through the new year. Option A starts on the 23rd of December, so this one has a slightly longer winter break. This one also has two workdays at the end of January, allowing for both a reserved-for-school day as well as a reserved-for-central-office day for training to help prepare teachers for the second semester. And then, you'll see on the, on the next slide, when we get into inclement weather days, it also ensures teachers that there is a protected workday at the end of the first semester to allow them to get their grades done, which was a major concern this year when they lost that day to a student makeup day. This one has a one work, one workday at the end of March, at the end of the third quarter, and then a five-day spring break. But you can see that students would actually have a little bit extended spring break because they would not go to school on that March 26th. However, that day is in there as, I will be in full transparency, it's on the next slide, as an inclement weather day makeup, because the teachers would be able to go right into spring break and have that time to finish upgrades if they needed, if we needed that day as a makeup day. So, those are the major distinctions between options A and option B. However, the recommendation of staff is that we go with the public opinion and, and go with option B with, with the following piece, which is the, the inclement weather days on the dates that you can see up on the screen, trying again to make sure that we preserve those, those days in January to the best of, of our ability to kind of foresee what, what weather we might have in 2020, just as a reminder. So, in terms of early release days, you might notice that there aren't any early release days on the 2021 calendar, and that's because staff is going to be evaluating the effectiveness of those during this school year. That is a practice that has had mixed reviews in the district. Parents generally do not like early release days because it causes havoc with their childcare needs, and staff members generally have mixed reviews about early release days depending on how they are utilized in their schools. Some schools have great success with early release days and are very productive. Other schools do not find them as, as productive. So, this year, we're going to spend some time looking at that and seeing if we can make a decision around how effective those are and whether or not that's something that we would like to continue. If staff wants to make that recommendation, there will be a revision to the 2021 calendar prior to the end of the 1920 year. So, again, so that folks can plan accordingly. So, you may have heard that there are some bills out there in the General Assembly dealing with calendar flexibility for school calendars. House Bill 45 was specific to the Winston-Salem-Frisite County Schools. 79 is, has more statewide implications. There were over 30 bills submitted to the, to the House this year for calendar flexibility. So, for those of us who really want the flexibility, our fingers are crossed that, that something is going to happen, you know, email your congressman, please, and encourage them if that's something that is of interest to you. They would allow for increased flexibility, so we could actually start earlier in August than what state law currently provides that would allow the first semester to actually wrap up with testing to be complete by the start of winter break. Can I get an amen?
Amen.
Yeah, thank you. And, and then that would also allow for the, the school year to end before Memorial Day. And so, that, that's a model that I think lots of people would, would heartily support if it was, if it was written into law. And, and if that certainly becomes a law, staff would certainly come back to you with the recommendation to at least consider making that calendar our, our adopted calendar for the 2021 school year. So, our recommendation for tonight for you to consider is that the Board of Education adopt option B with the recommended inclement weather days for the 2021 school year. Any questions for me?
No.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Karen Roseborough with the Inspire 340 update.
Good evening, Dr. Simington, Madam Chair, Board members. This is an update from Inspire 340 for the upcoming school year. We are in the middle of making some changes to the various ways that we support our lowest performing schools in the district. And we have identified the following schools as being a top priority for our school turnaround efforts. Our first criteria is we have decided to tier the schools and provide schools with supplementary as well as, I mean supplemental as well as with direct intensive support. So, the first criteria for our Tier Two schools is that would be any school that has a C or a D letter grade, and schools would be identified every three years, and that will coincide with our state designation and federal designation of TSI, CSI schools. These particular schools have showed up on the state recurring low-performing schools list, as well as they have been identified as a CSI or a TSI school. The proposed Tier Two schools for the 2019-22 school year would be Bronson Elementary, Carver High School, Gibson Elementary, Abraham Elementary, John F. Kennedy Elementary, Paisley, IB Magnet, Wiley Magnet, and Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy. All of the schools on the Tier Two supplemental list, all of those schools either maintained or increased proficiency in the past three years under Inspire 340, or they met or exceeded growth. The only school that did not increase proficiency and did not meet growth was Bronson Elementary. The following schools would get the following supports as a Tier Two school is they would continue on as Cohort One schools for MTSS. We would continue to support them with teacher recruitment and retention strategies because we currently have these schools listed in a number of federal grants as well. And then, anything that they would like to opt into as far as Inspire 340 support or TSI professional development opportunities. So, their, their support would be flexible for the upcoming school year as needed, but they will also receive their NC Star coaching support in the school improvement data warehouse. Also, for the Tier Three intensive support, these are the schools that have a performance grade of F, and they cannot have a score lower than 39. We have decided to make a concerted effort to focus very heavily and strategically on transforming our schools that have the letter grade of F. Many of these schools were listed in the bottom 5% and are in jeopardy of being identified by the Innovative School District unless they take on a state reform model, which we talked about earlier this year, which was the restart status schools, as well as, these are schools that have been identified as receiving school improvement grant funds. In the past three years, the following schools, Ashley Academy, Cook Elementary, Easton Elementary, Forest Park, Hall Woodward, Kimberly Park, North Hills Elementary will be added to our list, Petrie Elementary, Mineral Springs Middle, and Philo Hill Middle. And there's an asterisk beside Mineral Springs Middle and Philo Hill Middle because their school turnaround efforts are unique to their needs. Currently, you know, we have Dr. Gladstone that is running two campuses, and we also have our former science program director running Philo Hill Magnet. The following schools will receive the following supports. We will provide direct intensive support with instructional coaching and programming, NC Star coaching. The North Carolina DPI School Reform Support Team will also support these schools. SIG and restart support, additional district monitoring support, Inspire 340 advocacy, teacher support, and incentives for their teachers. On this particular list, over the past three years, 11 out of all of the 15 schools collectively have increased proficiency. Ashley Cook, Easton, Forest Park, Kimberly Park, Mineral Springs Middle, and Philo Hill Middle, although the gains were not significant, they did increase proficiency. And also, Hall Woodward, North Hills Elementary are being added to our list of schools because Hall Woodward was a 38F and North Hills Elementary was a 39F, and both schools met the criteria for needing additional support. We look forward in the upcoming school year with partnering with our state, local, and community resources to help us do the heavy lifting work of increasing literacy rates across the board in our lowest performing schools in the district. We also are streamlining our professional development for the upcoming school year due to a number of state mandates that are coming out, as well as, I believe, we will be transitioning from M-class to I-stations. So, we're really trying hard not to bombard our teachers with too much training this year. So, when we talk about direct support, that will mean boots on the ground, we will be in those schools, the 10 that you see listed at the top, supporting those principals with their school turnaround efforts as they deem necessary.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any. I don't think anyone else has any questions either. So, thank you, Dr. Roseborough.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Andy Craft. He will talk to us about the 2019-20 alternative accountability model.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You are familiar with our accountability model here in the state, which is made up of 80% proficiency and 20% growth. That accountability model applies to all of our schools. We have some non-traditional schools who could also have an alternative designation. I want to talk to you about your options for that alternative designation. You see that all of our schools, non-traditional and traditional schools, have that A-through-F performance grade, but non-traditional schools can elect to have an alternative progress designation. They'd either be progressing, maintaining, or declining. Unlike the traditional school performance grade, which is based 80% on proficiency, 20% on growth, the, the non-traditional schools can have a designation based on student persistence, which is 20%, school achievement, which is 20%, and growth, which would make up 60% of that designation. So, again, that's in addition to the school performance grade. They have that, you, you have that option to decide that they would have that designation. There's one other decision for you to make, and that is, in the case of not enough data, that would be fewer than 30 students tested in a school year, what would happen? You have two options. One would be those scores get returned to the sending school, in which case, the school would get the designation from the largest percentage of students that come to them, the designation that, that the school that has the largest percentage of kids sending to them. Or, you could use three years of data to determine the school performance grade for that non-traditional school. It's our recommendation that you do allow the alternative schools, and the schools who are listed here, these six schools, to have a alternative accountability measure in addition to their school performance grade. That is Carter Children's Center, Main Street, Kingswood, Lawrence, and the Special Children's School. This was what you decided to do last year. We recommend that we continue to do it in the 1920 school year. And then, we also recommend that if there is insufficient data for any of these six schools, that the scores would be returned to the home sending schools, and these alternative schools would get the score from the largest percentage of students, the school that sends in the largest percentage of students. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Has Winston-Salem-Frisite County Schools ever thought about looking at its own alternative accountability model, so option C? Has there ever been any thought of thinking through ourselves what we would do with our non-traditional schools versus taking the option B?
We, we could certainly consider using a different formula if we'd like to. The Board in the past has decided they like this formula, and we've gone with it every year. But that's something, certainly something that we could consider if we wanted to use a different formula, in which case, we would have to propose that to the state. The state would have to approve or disapprove our recommendation.
Do you know of any other districts that have created their own alternative accountability model for their non-traditional schools?
I don't, but I could do that research if you'd like.
So, the one thing that I'm a bit concerned about is if the school has less than the number that needs to be tested to get the quote-unquote grade, then that grade, their scores go back to the school that sent them there. And that could skew that, the sending school's score for 30 kids, easy, if, or 30 kids or less, easy. They could, it could take them from a B to a C in some cases. Every, every kid counts when we're looking at this accountability piece. So, I would just be concerned about the effect of the receiving school that has not had any real accountability of those students, other than they're on their roster because of whatever reason.
Those student scores would be included in the sending school's score, that's correct. It's unlikely that all 30, well, of course, this is less than 30, right? So, all 29 or less come from the same school? That's, that's unlikely. But nonetheless, those scores would be included and could change depending on how large the overall group that's being tested is, so...
And so, what I will say is, I worked in a school, and this was, this is going to tell how long this has been, but we were one student away from making AYP, and that hunts me to this day. One student. And we were fought, you know, tooth and nail with the state. One student.
Sure.
And so, even that one student could, you know, impact the grading of the quote-unquote sending school, you know. So, I, I would just ask that we, you know, consider that, and I don't know if, if it's the board pleasure tonight to think of something different, but I would recommend, you know, in the future, for instance, next year at least, we consider coming up something, coming up with something that doesn't truly impact the quote-unquote sending school if they have not really had any real accountability over those students at other schools.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I think you raise a good point, and it's important to understand, you're making two different decisions here, right? So, so the second piece that you're talking about is, do we send the scores back or not?
Yeah.
Right? If we don't send them back, then we use a three-year aggregate for that school. Okay? So, so that's, that's one piece of this. The other piece is, do we use an alternative accountability model, right? And if, we, we could make our own criteria for that or not, use the state's criteria. So, so those are really two different decisions you have to make. One, do we send the scores back or not? And two, do we use our own criteria for the alternative accountability model, or do we use the state's, so?
Okay.
So, Andy, could you go back a slide to the first recommendation so that we could see both of those?
Sure. So, so the, the first decision you have to make is, do you want to use option A? In that case, they would only have a school performance grade. Option B, which we're recommending where they get a school performance grade, plus an alternative designation, progressing, declining. Or, you could use option C, where you create your own, right? Where we, we create our own model. So, that's one decision you have to make, right? Just a school performance grade, school performance grade plus an alternative designation, or school performance grade plus our own criteria.
So, what would be the benefit of option B? Why did we, why, why are you recommending option B, say for instance, over option C? I understand why not option A, because you're setting these schools up for failure by way of they're non-traditional and should not be assessed like we do the traditional high schools.
Well, that's right. And historically, the Board has been pleased with the model that the state has, and so that's why we've used it. We, we put that by all the principals, and they all like that formula as well.
Oh, okay, so the principals like.
Yeah.
So, I'm not familiar with the alternative schools progress model, option B. So, that's where my ignorance lies, with not understanding why this option. But if the principals have looked at it and agree with it, then I wouldn't, you know, stand in the way of that. stand in the way of that for sure. I'm just, you know, maybe inquiring.
I think the principals like it because sixty percent of it is based on growth, which, as you know, is significantly different than the traditional school performance grade. So again, that's one option you have here to decide. Yes, we want to use, right, just school performance grade, Option B, the state formula, or create our own. The second decision that you have to make is what to do in the case of insufficient scores. Do we use a three-year aggregate for that school? Or do we send those scores back to all the sending schools and then use the score from the school that sends the most students to that school, highest percentage of students? Does that make sense?
What are you recommending?
So we're recommending, first of all, you select Option B, that is, the alternative accountability measure for all of these schools. And we are also recommending that if there is a case of insufficient data for an alternative school, that you send the scores back to the home schools, and those schools get that grade. These alternative schools get the same grade as the school that's sending the largest percentage of kids to these schools. That's our recommendation.
Are the principals in agreement with that recommendation as well?
Yes. All of these principals of all of these schools have seen that recommendation and agree with it, yes.
What I would want to know, how, the principals of the schools that would get the scores of these schools, have you had conversation with them?
So it hasn't come into play that any of these schools have had insufficient data thus far. So we could go and look at, I mean, you know, if you consider any of these schools. Main Street gets kids from every one of our high schools, most of our middle schools. And so we could certainly ask the principals at all of our high schools. Again, it hasn't come into play in the past, so no, I don't know that we've put the alternative accountability model past our non-alternative schools.
If we're going to make a decision on this issue, I would like to find out from the principals how they would like for us to proceed if there is insufficient data.
Okay. From the principals of the non-alternative schools?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree that I would feel more comfortable, because right now, I'm thinking I would prefer the three years of aggregate data of the non-traditional schools. But if the principals of the sending schools say, it's fine, and we don't really think it's going to impact us like that, but I think you would find some concerns of the sending schools. But I don't want to speak on their behalf. I really would like to get advice from the principals of the sending schools.
Okay. So you have to submit your decision by August one, so we'll bring it back at the next board meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
So just one other piece, I think as you think about whether we send scores back, one of the things that we like to consider is that even though students have been assigned to alternative schools, that in some part, they are still a part of that home school. And so both schools bear some responsibility of their performance and how they've done, because typically, they spend a number of days at both the alternative school and the home school.
Thank you.
Okay. The next discussion item is the School Choice Special Committee Report. And Chair Brimer has requested that Vice Chair Dana Carter Jones present the report because the Chair Brimer was not present at our most recent School Choice Meeting because she was ill. So she has requested that the Vice Chair provide the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. So when the committee met this past time, we reviewed transportation with Wayne Loughlin. We had, he was the only presenter on the agenda, shared some great information. That was the second transportation presentation we had had at that committee. The month before, I think Darryl Taylor had talked to us about that. We had some time as a committee to have some discussion around what the staff would be collecting and working on. We will not meet as a committee in the month of July. And so we, I think, as it was noted tonight in some public comments, this plan had been in place for a long time. So we were going to look at specifically at first, the middle school piece of choice, especially since we have the Lewisville Middle School that will be going online very soon. And we'll need a zone for that school. So we have asked student assignment and other staff members to look at the middle school model. We will also look at some of the ORED data that a previous board had looked at and worked with NC State on, and so staff will get that together for us. And also to review the Magnet schools and the success of Magnet schools at that middle school level. So staff will look at that, prepare some information, and we will review it come August.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from other board members? Okay. Thank you. Next, we will have Deanna Kaplan for the Climate, Culture, and Equity Special Committee Report. Where's the Climate Community and Equity, just to correct the language? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. So the committee met on June third. The meeting began with an update by Dr. Karen Roseborough on the June fourteenth Core Value Summit, which will be held at Walker Town Elementary from eight-thirty to two-thirty. Dr. Roseborough gave us a status report of applicants for the Director of Equity position. The application deadline was May twenty-ninth, and I believe around a hundred applied. So, and Dr. Kelly Hels gave a very informative presentation on the Every Student Succeeds Act and related federal programs, including Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title III, and Title IV Part A, and how each of these federal programs provide supplemental resources to the school district to support and impact student outcomes. David Sisk, Director of English Learner Programs, reviewed equity policies in comparable school districts and led us in an exercise to determine and answer the questions of what is equity and how do we get to equity? As we collectively formulate and craft our district equity policy, we need to consider clear strategies and a clear definition of equity. And starting in August, we will continue to work with survey results and collaborate with the Policy Committee to capture ideas and work on defining the key terms related to equity. Meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the Climate Community and Equity Report? Okay. Thank you. Next, we will have, again, Deanna Kaplan to discuss the Finance Committee Report.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met today, and April Bell and Tyler Beatty from Dixon Hughes Goodman reviewed the two thousand eighteen annual audit report with a PowerPoint presentation, which included a general review of the financial highlights and a review of the compliance audit of major programs and its findings. Frida Lashman reviewed the Budget Amendment Number Eight and Transfer Number Eight. And Dr. Simmington summarized the local budget outcomes, as well as some of the directives that the county commissioners have tasked the board with as it relates to teacher supplements and the salary schedule we need to complete in order to, in order for them to release the funds. Meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Board Member Kaplan. Next, and lastly, we have Board Member Leah Crowley, who will give us a report on Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. Buildings and Grounds met today. Our, we had two discussion items. One was a maintenance report from Brent Teague. We are on pace this year for fifty thousand work orders. It's about four hundred and four work orders per employee per year. So that's a lot of maintenance being done across our district. Brent also updated us on the two thousand eighteen summer maintenance capital projects, just kind of whenever, everything that's been done. It goes from replacing generators, roofs, HVAC, et cetera, to paving projects and kitchen renovations. And he also let us know what was on deck for this summer, which is when we try to get a lot of maintenance work done while students aren't in the school. Darryl let us know about the Paisley, Lawrence, and Conoc buildings that will be open this fall for school, and gave us some dates that the staff will be able to tour those facilities. Our next meeting will be August thirteenth. And one other announcement made is that we are on pace to have land purchase for Ashley by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Board Member Crowley. Our next order of business is, we have several action items. And the first item for approval is the amendment to the two thousand nineteen-twenty school calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All approve? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. The next item is the adoption of Option B of the two thousand twenty-twenty-one school calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
And this is for Option B?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay. All approved? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the two thousand nineteen-twenty-two Inspire 340 schools. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay. All approve? Any opposed? Motion carries. For the next item of the two thousand nineteen-twenty alternative accountability model, I would move that we table this item so that we don't break up the recommendations, since they're going to get some information from the principals regarding how to report the scores.
I second that.
Any question or discussion? Okay. All approve? Any opposed? Oh, I forgot to raise my hand.
Madam Chair, just so that we're clear, can you reiterate what you would like for us to get regarding the alternative model?
We wanted to ask the sending principals, would they prefer the scores to come back to them for any students that are twenty-nine and, the number of twenty-nine or below students tested at the alternative or non-traditional school?
Okay.
I think I said that correctly. Yes. Okay.
Insufficient data. When we have...
The second recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Oh, Board Member Burke, sorry. Okay. Where are we? Okay. Next, we're going to consider approval of the Imprint Care Agreement Amendment and Extension.
A second.
Any questions or discussion? All approve? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to consider approval of the Alphabet Agreement Renewal and Extension.
Chair Woodbury, I recuse myself.
Yes. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All approves? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is, let me just set the context. Periodically, our board makes an appointment to the Forsyth Tech Community College Board of Trustees. So I would ask is there a motion to make an appointment?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lyda Calvert-Hayes to Forsyth Tech's Community College Board of Trustees.
I would like to second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I just need to make a comment.
Okay.
Periodically, we're asked to approve a name of a person to serve in these capacities that is given to us by the board, and in this case, it's Forsyth Tech. And I've already expressed this to Lyda, so this is not a surprise, and it's not an attack on Lyda, I believe she fully could do the job. But they brought us a name of a lady, and historically, we have always approved that person that they bring to us. And my issue is not that Lyda can't do the job, she certainly could, and she's done a lot for Forsyth Tech. But I don't want this board to set a precedent that we feel like we can afford, appoint members of our own board to another board when we are the voting body that makes that decision. I think there's an appearance of conflict of interest there, and that is my concern. I think we should go ahead and approve the person that they brought to us.
Let me say what I've done for Forsyth Tech. I've served on the Forsyth Tech Board. Then I was appointed president for the Forsyth Tech Foundation Board and served on that also. I also have given scholarships, numerous scholarships, to underprivileged children needing to go to Forsyth Tech in memory of my brother. When Dr. Green came and was appointed president, he asked me at that time, because I was president of the Foundation Board, if I would go with him when they installed him as president of Forsyth Tech. I feel like that, that there needs to be an advocacy as far as someone advocating for our teachers, as well as Forsyth Tech also. I think Winston-Salem Schools and Forsyth Tech should join hands together, and as a school board member, and our school board, I think that we can certainly do that. I'm proud to say that Dana Jones is also appointed by the commissioners, and she is also a valuable member of Forsyth Tech. So I feel like that I do have the experience, and I also do not see this as a conflict of interest.
Madam Chair, I just think Lyda Hayes would be a perfect, perfect choice to represent our board.
I would also like to say, I do believe that Board Member Lyda Calvert-Hayes would be the best person to strengthen the relationship between this school board and Forsyth Tech, and help us to maximize any opportunities to strengthen the goals that we have for our students.
And I would just like to just reiterate the fact that our board is definitely in recognition of, you know, Board Member Lyda Calvert-Hayes having all of the aptitude and disposition and quality to sit on our board. And I appreciate Board Member Clark saying that, but she just had, you know, a problem with, you know, maybe the process. And so I, you know, respect what she has said and take, you know, accountability as the leader for the process, but very clear about, she knows that Board Member Lyda Hayes can do the job. So with that being said, if there is no more discussion or question, can we take the vote? All approve the motion to approve or recommend Board Member Lyda Calvert-Hayes. Okay? Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next order of business is our consent agenda items. The approval of the meeting minutes for May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Approval of the special call meeting minutes for June sixth, two thousand nineteen. And approval of the general personnel report.
So moved? Second.
Are there any questions or discussion about those consent agenda items? All right? All approve? Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next order of business is, are open to the public comments. And I just want to say, before we begin this section of our meeting, in which anyone can comment on anything we say, good evening to our, good night to our Cable Two viewers, and thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast. And at this time, we will open the meeting to those who have...
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable Two.